And then we'll start Fantastic 49 here in just a minute or two. We're delayed receiving last-minute instructions. Just take your time. There's a lot of people we're recognizing today. I know you gotta shuffle them and get them in order.
Is it on right? There we go. All right, well, welcome to our October Fantastic 49 presentation. My name is Amy Matysik and I'm the Internal Communications Manager for School District 49. Tonight, we're going to celebrate with a theme that is similar to what we did last month with the theme of "We Love D-49 Teachers." And obviously, this is a campaign where we've seen numerous things around the district over the last several months, actually. And as I was putting this presentation together, I thought a little bit about, you know, how did we really come up with why we love D-49 teachers? And it resonated with me that as you read each of these nominations, not just from this month, but going back several months, hundreds since I've been doing this, is you can see in the nominations that mention our educators that our teachers love D-49 students. And that's why we love them, because they are bringing into the classroom a caring environment. They are invested in our students, and we can see that. And we also know we know that when we have teachers like that, that's how we get successful students. So we're also very lucky tonight that in addition to celebrating several of our fantastic educators, we are also going to recognize several of our students who have found success, at least partially due to these fantastic teachers. For our honorees and those who nominated them, they'll first come to the podium to make remarks, and then they will go to the back to get a photo by the photo backdrop, and we will use that photo in addition to a lot of the content from tonight and news stories that we will share in numerous different communications channels across the district. Before I introduce you to our honorees for tonight, I always have to give a shout-out to our Fantastic 49 sponsors, because thanks to them, all of our honorees tonight receive not only a plaque, but also a small gift card and token of appreciation. And tonight, all of our honorees will receive a small gift card to a variety of different retailers, thanks to our friends from Air Academy Credit Union. We are going to kick things off by first recognizing a teacher from Meridian Ranch Elementary School, and she is a project-based learning teacher there, and her name is Shelley Welch. Shelley is a teacher who goes above and beyond the duties of a teacher every day. She wears a lot of different hats. She's a representative for the PTA, the lead teacher representative. She's a teacher mentor and a positive role model throughout the school. She's always working to make sure that Meridian Ranch is a great place to be. So here to tell us more about how Shelley is so dedicated to students at Meridian Ranch and helping make it a better place is the school's principal who nominated her, and that is Jennifer Palazzolo. So at this time, I'd like to invite up both Jennifer and Shelley.
Hi, thank you all for being here. This is Shelley Welch, so this is why we're here. Shelley Welch teaches project-based learning at Meridian Ranch. She has been at Meridian Ranch for 11 years, but she's been in education for 25. She's like a unicorn. She is an incredible human being. She has the biggest heart, and Just Today was described as "amazing" with a capital A. Shelley puts others excuse me. Shelley puts others before herself, is a natural critical thinker, problem solver, and is willing to take on the most challenging tasks. This year, Shelley is serving as a formal mentor to a new teacher and team member, but informally, Shelley supports her entire team with individualized learning by helping to create learning plans, pre- and post-assessments, and opportunities for each student to grow. In Shelley's class, she teaches students to think outside of the box. Really, she teaches them that there isn't a box. On any given day, you may see students in Mrs. Welch's class connecting with each other through riddles, puzzles, and engineering. Ms. Welch co-leads Battle of the Books, has created Shark Tank for students, and Just Today, she was dressed as an old lady to complement her lesson. Shelley will drop everything if she can make someone smile, come to school, events, or help lift up a student or staff member. She embodies what it means to be fully and completely invested in our District 49 students, and we are lucky to have her at Meridian Ranch.
I will tell anyone who may listen that I have the best job in D-49. And the cherry on the top is to hear that I'm doing a good job in this job that's so good. So I appreciate both the opportunity and the recognition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelley. D-49 appreciates everything that you do for our students and families at Meridian Ranch. Next up, we are going to honor a special education professional from one of our charter schools, and that is Pioneer Technology and Arts Academy, and the educator is Carrie Cantwell. Carrie served as a special education teacher last year, and then it was this year that she took on the role of coordinating the school's special education program. She was nominated by a community member, Abby Farren, and Abby wrote about her that any student under her direction will have all the tools for success, with Carrie being the most valuable. She advocates for equality, impresses positive morals, and shows undying patience. Abby couldn't be here tonight, but when I mentioned to her principal, Shannon Houston, that we wanted to honor Carrie, Shannon was very enthusiastic about being part of honoring her, and she brought with her another colleague, Kim Gallegos, who's an instructional coach and gifted and talented coordinator. So at this time, I'd like to bring up Carrie, and Shannon, and Kim.
This is our Carrie Cantwell. So I'm Shannon Houston, the principal of Pioneer Technology and Arts Academy. Kim Gallegos, our GT coordinator, and of course Carrie Cantwell, who came to us last year as our sped teacher through the contract with Special Services with D-49. She showed herself to be an amazing teacher, case manager, and we were very excited when she accepted the position to head up our sped team that we were creating as our sped coordinator. She's an excellent teacher and advocate for all students. I'm consistently impressed with Carrie's dedication, expertise, and unwavering commitment to the field of special education. Carrie consistently demonstrates exceptional leadership qualities and possesses a deep understanding of the unique needs of the students with diverse abilities and learning styles. In addition to her knowledge and expertise, Carrie is an excellent communicator and collaborator. She has a talent for building strong relationships with both students and their families, as well as with teachers and support staff. Her skillful communication has been instrumental in fostering a positive and supportive atmosphere within our school community. Furthermore, Carrie is highly organized and efficient, thank goodness, in managing the administrative aspects of special education programs. She has a keen eye for detail, ensuring that all individual education plans are meticulously crafted and adhered to, and that necessary accommodations and supports are provided properly. And we are so excited that she is receiving this and well-deserved award.
Thank you. I'm really not texting. I'm looking at my notes, just so you know. So I mean, this job's not easy, right? We all know that. Education is a tough gig, which is why I'm just super honored and humbled to be recognized this evening. I love what I do, but I can't be successful without an amazing team to get through each day. And my team starts with my family, who love and support me despite the late nights, early mornings, and occasional need to put others before them. At school, let's face it, the walls would probably tumble to the ground without our brilliant registrar and office staff. My service providers are amazing and bring a wealth of expertise and knowledge to every unique situation. I have paras who bring their best every day, supporting students and teachers. I'm pretty sure they can read my mind, which is a little scary, but they're always doing the things that I need them to do without even needing to ask. My administration is supportive and collaborative because they want what is best for every child. The teaching staff at PTAA strive for excellence every day and are open to trying new things to help students gain access to their education, because they understand that special education isn't a place, and every child in special needs is a gen ed student first. It truly takes a village, and I'm incredibly honored to be part of D-49 and PTAA, serving students and families with special needs. Thank you.
Congratulations to Carrie. We are so thankful to have her here to help our students with special needs and to be part of the team at one of our charter schools. Next up, we are going to honor a third-grade teacher from Inspiration View Elementary, and that is Jody O'Driscoll. Jody is an educator who is described as "teaching from the heart." She has a genuine interest in connecting with all of her students and families. In fact, it was communication from one of the school's families to the principal, Pam Holloman, that prompted this nomination for Fantastic 49. So here to tell us more about Jody, if she has arrived yet she's not here, but not to worry, because I have her nomination here, and I will share it on her behalf. So at this time, I'll invite Jody up, and I will share some of the comments that Pam had to say about her. So this is from Pam. I'm just the reader. Jody is an amazing educator who passionately works with her whole heart each and every day. She is a much-sought-after teacher. Recently, I heard from yet another parent that was singing her praises. This family was very specific. They read an email that Mrs. Driscoll had sent to them, and they had tears in their eyes when they said, "Mrs. O'Driscoll really gets my child." She really knows him. It was through her care for students and the commitment to giving each and every day to all of her students that they consistently grow from year to year. She is truly a gift to each student and each family in her classroom. So thank you, Jody, for everything that you do for Inspiration View Elementary.
Thank you. Thank you. I wish I usually talk really loud, so I'm gonna try to stay a little away from it. I wish I could tell you I've done this all alone, but I haven't. It takes a village, it truly does. And I just want to thank my great, my amazing bosses and coworkers and the supportive parents. It's huge to me that they're so supportive. And also my precious students, I love them so much, and thank you for this award and recognition, and thanks.
Thank you to Jody. I mean, that is an incredible example, again, of how we love our teachers because our teachers love our students. And speaking of students, we're next going to transition to honoring some of our students. Two students from Vista Ridge High School, and these students are finding success in D-49 thanks to our many fantastic educators. Taylor Javier and Garrett Sandoval are seniors at Vista Ridge High School, and they were recognized recently by the College Board because they have at least a 3.5 GPA and had outstanding performance on AP exams, which earned them National Hispanic Recognition Awards. So here to tell us more about their academic success is one of the assistant principals from Vista Ridge High School, Becky Sims. So at this time, I'll invite up Becky, Taylor, and Garrett.
All right, first, I have to say yes, it's Wednesday. Yes, I'm wearing pink, and it's Mean Girls Week. So there's my shameless plug, come watch Mean Girls at Vista Ridge High School. Okay. I'm truly honored to be here to recognize Taylor and Garrett. They have worked so extremely hard through their high school career, and obviously, it shows here. They're nationally recognized by the College Board. Taylor and Garrett earned this recognition by maintaining at least a 3.5 GPA, excelling on their AP Advanced Placement Language and Composition Exams, and by receiving high marks on the PSAT 10. In fact, Taylor had an overall score of 1,120, and Garrett had an overall score of 1,140. So both Taylor and Garrett are academic leaders at Vista Ridge High School and very deserving of the National Hispanic Recognition Award. And I'm so thankful to be able to recognize these students and all of their hard work. This isn't something that happens overnight, and they've obviously had these skills embedded to succeed so well at high school, so congratulations to them.
I really appreciate being honored for this. It means a lot. I've been with District 49 for all 13 years of my education, and I'm really glad to finish here. And I definitely think District 49 prepared me to be successful in the future, and I can't wait to see what comes next.
I just want to say thank you for having me up here. And this could not have been possible without the support of my parents and my friends. And just thank you for the award.
All right. Well, to wrap up for tonight, we're going to recognize another group of students who have demonstrated exceptional leadership, and they're members of our Student Board of Representatives. Specifically, we are honoring those who played a big part in organizing and facilitating our board candidate forum last month. Jamie Bell, Ava Cross, Nicole Hamilton, Sidney Herman, Trajan Maldonado, Kaitlin McCready, Sadie Seer, and Kaylee Wood provide valuable insight at numerous different Board of Education meetings, but they were very impressive to community members who were here that month. They were noted in the nomination as making relevant and thoughtful questions, and also modeling respectful communication and moderating in an expert way during the event. These students were nominated for recognition by a community member with Neighbors for Education, and that's Lindsay Lee. So at this time, I am going to invite up Lindsay Lee, as well as these SBOR students.
I was really proud to nominate this crew and all of the members of the Student Board of Representatives for Fantastic 49 this month, because as well, let me tell you a little bit about Neighbors for Education really quickly. We are a community coalition advocating for educational equity in public schools, and so we wanted to recognize these students for the incredible work they did in organizing the candidate forum. As a parent who's attended board meetings consistently for about the last two and a half years, I consistently see these kids show up with thoughtful and engaging questions, curiosities, and really significant contributions to the considerations that the board are making. And so it was a real pleasure to watch them also organize the candidate forum to give the voters of our community some insight into our upcoming elections and what the candidates have to say. And so I'm just very grateful for all of the work that y'all did. And I just want to also recognize not only the skill and the professionalism with which they conducted that forum, but also the fact that we're in a tricky political climate, and it took a lot of courage to do what they did. And so on behalf of Neighbors for Education and our members, I wanted to express our appreciation for all of that great work.
Thank you, Ms. Lee and the D-49. The candidate forum was an issue that was really important to both last year's Student Board and this year's Student Board, so we're really pleased that we got to put it on this year. Thank you for this recognition.
Hello. We would be insane if we did not give one giant thank you to Ms. Lauren Stewart for communicating with us, organizing this, making sure we had everything figured out, so let's say thank you to that. I just want to leave you with the question why. Why would a bunch of students meet with the president of the Board of Education and the superintendent once a month to talk about things going on in our school? Because we go to school with teachers that inspire us to be leaders. We go to school with assistant principals like Mr. Lance Carroll that help us grow our leadership abilities and challenge our communication, challenge the way we share ideas, challenge to think outside of the box. We go to amazing schools with amazing teachers who are empowering us to be leaders every day. Thank you.
Congratulations to this excellent representation of D-49 students. We're very proud of all that they do, so thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations again to all of our honorees tonight, but before we do wrap it up, I would like to turn it over to the president of the Board of Education, Mr. John Graham, for final remarks.
This is one of the best parts of being the board president, being on the board, is to see the recognition that our district gives, not only to these wonderful teachers, all of the staff, the parent volunteers, the students. It is a tremendous privilege to prepare students for adult life. And education is a tough gig. What gets our teachers through is the teamwork, is the trust, is the respect, is the responsibility, the innovation that they get to do, the empowerment, the learning to do better, the purposes that they have. They are full of courage and commitment to our community, to the students that attend their classes. It is an inspiration to me, and I know that they are all trusted leaders, and I do love District 49 teachers, and all the staff, actually. So I actually have something for Amy Matysik and Julie Romero. Get up here. Come. I hand out coins that I had made and paid for from the president of the Board of Education. It encompasses our compass, and it says "preparing students for adult life," and I hand these out sparingly, and not necessarily to leaders like Peter and Brad, but to the people that actually do the work.
Thank you so much for everything you do.
Yeah, absolutely.
And thank you, Mr. Graham, and thank you again to all of our honorees also, because we know it's the fantastic staff and the students that you met tonight that make District 49 fantastic. And that concludes our presentation.
And we're gonna delay the board meeting for a few minutes so that we can get out there and mingle with you and congratulate all the recipients. And so maybe 6:35, maybe 6:40, we'll see. And so maybe 6:35, maybe 6:40, we'll see. Welcome, the time is 6:38. Welcome to our Wednesday, October 25th, 2023 Board of Education Special Meeting. For the Student Board of Representatives, we have Amanda Trupp from PPEC. And yes, I know your uncle, I will report back all behaviors to him. And Ava Cross, both from Pike's Peak Early College. And may I have a roll call?
Devalla?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Van Wern.
Here.
At my board meetings, District 49 is proud to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me. And Jamie Lynn, lead us off. Before we get to a motion for the agenda, I have a point of privilege. Number one, do you award winning Vista Yearbook? Okay, I'm going to pass it along. And nextly, I would like to recognize some of the bad things that are happening out in the Middle East. And I will say that terrorism is a bad thing and some of our community and students have been affected. And I know that District 49 is reaching out to, or not reaching out, but is there for those who have been affected within our communities. I've talked to a couple of rabbis and some others and it's really hitting home out here. So let's be patient, let's be supportive, let's be loving to all our students, even through these types of struggles. Motion for agenda?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Vote, please.
Devalla?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Van Wern?
Aye.
Motion passes. We're on to Action Item 4.1, Innovation Plans for Power and Sand Creek Zone Schools. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the innovation plans with the resolution.
Second.
For further discussion, can you read the resolution, please?
Yes. Preamble. The Board of Education has authorized the development and has approved the proposals for Innovation Zone status and the related plans and waiver requests. And consistent with its commitment to rigorous content standards, the Board of Education wishes to exercise its statutory authority to oversee and to approve curricular choices at all schools. Whereas D-49 Board of Education affirms and will continuously support the thoughtful and ambitious innovation plans adopted by D-49 schools. And whereas many of the innovation plans contain requests for statutory waivers of CRS 22-32-101T, which affords the schools the potential to independently identify educational programs and to prescribe textbooks at the school level. And whereas while recognizing the desire of schools to execute curricular decisions at a local level, the Board of Education has determined that as the representative body of the community, it must sometimes participate in the final determinations regarding the efficacy economy and equality of educational programs and materials to best serve students. Now be it resolved, we, the District 49 Board of Education, do hereby declare that policy IG and its associated regulation are not to be waived regardless of any contrary intent contained in any innovation plan of the district. Further, in accordance to policy IG and the regulations, shall be interpreted and amended as may be necessary to make clear that the Board of Education retains and may exercise the authority to determine educational programs and to prescribe textbooks in all district-operated schools.
Thank you. As part of a further discussion, the board should consider selecting three schools, one in each of the geographic zones. And this is just for discussion, okay? Because the plan has to be developed if we do go this way, for a local school governance model. And my suggestion is each zone leader pick an elementary school in their zone. Get the parents involved like they were 10, 12 years ago. Conspicuous, transparent, real involvement by the parents. Obviously not handpicked, but all those willing to participate. And my understanding is when I was running for the board in 2020, 2013 and 2015, that we had that in several of the elementary schools where 100 parents, 50 to 100 parents showed up to town halls. And they were basically recruited to show up and participate in how to move the school forward, what things to focus on, what programs and things like that. So I've talked about this in the last year a couple of times and I think that that innovation that took place, that's when we were first forming Innovation Zones. But that part of innovation, we don't have it as much as we should have it now. And if we can get back to, you know, Evan's having 100 people in the auditorium discussing how to move, how they, parents would want to move their schools forward. Or maybe even the Falcon School of Technology, things like that. It's a consideration for our zone leaders and for our superintendent to consider. That's something I know I mentioned to Mr. Hiltz before, okay? But it's basically a local governance model and, you know, down to the school level. Okay, so that's something for the board and future boards to consider, but that is not what's up for vote. And let's have a, if there's no further discussion, let's have a vote.
Devalla?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Van Wern?
Aye.
The Innovation Plans for Power Creek and the Sand Creek Zone Schools, as well as the resolution, keeping the authority for programs and curriculum at the board level, has passed. 5.1, new job description.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Nancy Lamond, Executive Director of Individualized Education, with a new job description for a social worker intern. As is continuing to be a challenge in education, finding quality candidates to fill all of our postings can be challenging. So one of the ways that we address that is by having interns. We invite them into the schools, such as we do student teachers, school psych interns, our speech language pathologists who might be working during their clinical fellowship year, their CFY. This was one position we did not have a job description for and so this is before you tonight for moving forward and approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Lamond? Okay. Do we have consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Jamie Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we're going to move forward to the November 9th regular meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Primary Literacy Performance, report.
Good evening. It's our pleasure to be here tonight with you. I'm Georgiana Rappaport. I'm the Coordinator of Literacy Performance and I'm joined by Yuki Rockwell, the District Literacy Coach. Yes. So can, do I move the slides forward or? Yep, that's what I'm trying, it doesn't seem to be working. Okay, thank you. So beginning with the 23, 24 school years, the Colorado Department of Education has adopted a new early literacy assessment. They've moved from Acadience Reading to Dibbles 8. And Dibbles 8 includes additional subtests and submeasures, which provides us with additional data on our students. And it also increases the rigor of the assessment, which we'll talk about as we look through the data. So with this change in assessment... So with this change in assessment, we've seen an increase in student scoring well below. And we attribute that to the increase in the rigor of the assessment. Just as an example, previously in kindergarten, students were tested on one subtest or submeasure where they had to identify the first sound of a word. And now they're being assessed on four subtests. And so in first grade, however, we anticipated more student scoring well below than is reflected in that data. If you could move to the next, and then one more, please. Thank you. In second grade and third grade, we have about 60% of our students scoring at or above benchmark at the beginning of year. This is our beginning of year data. And approximately 20% of students well below. In third grade and fourth grade, you can move to the next slide. Thank you. About 63% of students scored at or above in fourth grade, with only 15% of students performing well below in fourth grade. And in fifth grade, 55% of students scored at or above benchmark, with 25% of students performing well below. So this slide comes to us from Amplify. It is data provided from Amplify as a national user-based comparison. And just, I'll just point out a few things of interest. You'll notice in kindergarten, the percentage of students at risk is high across the nation at 42%. So that's just consistent with what we're seeing in our district. Another point of interest in third grade, 63% of students in District 49 are scoring at or above benchmark compared to 54% at or above the national level. I'll let Yuki talk about what we call the submeasures.
Yeah, so as we look at district-level data and we look at that data by grade level, we know that in kindergarten with the new measures, our focus really still is on alphabetic principle, the idea that letters represent sounds and those sounds connect to represent words. If you look at this, we know that right now we have a strong emphasis this year. We've prioritized letter naming fluency and phonemic awareness, which is the ability to hear a word and to break it into individual sounds. So those are our primary focuses with ultimately as we move forward in the year with kindergarten, we really want students to be able to be able to utilize those sounds to be able to start to blend and decode words. So if you'll move to the next slide. In first grade, really the primary focus as we work with schools and leadership teams across the board is the fact that what we really want students to do is to be able to blend those sounds together to be able to read words. This measure looks at more than just simple CVC words. So that's one of the elements of rigor that's been added to. It begins looking at words with silent E and other patterns. And really, the ultimate goal is that in first grade, if we're able to get students really strong in our nonsense word fluency or ability to blend, the goal will be to help support one of the big overarching goals, that reading fluency and the ability to engage in reading text is kind of that end goal. So that's why we prioritize that in first grade.
Excuse me, Yuki, will you explain what that acronym CVC stands for?
Yeah, so CVC stands for consonant vowel consonants. So it's words like cat and dog, where the vowel in the middle is short. So appreciate that. And then in second and third grade, and I'll kind of lump them together, even though we're looking at the second grade slide, is we're really looking at reading fluency and reading accuracy because by this point, they've had, students should have ample exposure to letter sounds, phonics patterns, and they should have a good grasp of being able to take those sounds, blend them, and be able to apply them to reading words. Accuracy is really, really important because as students acquire those skills, they should be able to engage in grade-level text and be able to read it. So right now, we have a strong emphasis there. I think one of the neat things in second and third grade with Dibbles 8 is they, we still are able to look at nonsense word fluency and what we call word reading fluency, which is a new measure that really looks at a combination of irregular words that may not follow phonics patterns and really high-frequency words. And so we haven't had those in previous years. So I think these two measures will help us really be able to determine where student gaps are when we see students who are struggling with accuracy. So those are kind of our priorities at second and third grade. Those are those items.
So those results we were looking at were from those Dibbles 8 tests. We're switching and thinking about STAR Early Literacy. And STAR Early Literacy is given to our first grade, our kindergarten and first grade students. And just a quick note of distinction between the two. So Dibbles 8 is a performance-based assessment that students sit one-on-one with a teacher and are assessed in that manner. STAR Early Literacy is more of an independent online assessment. So just a very, something to know in the difference in how students take that test, those tests. The purpose of the Dibbles Assessment is really to identify students at risk. And the STAR reading test that students take in kindergarten, first grade, and then they move into STAR Reading is really looking at how are they performing, moving towards proficiency with grade-level standards. So just a bit of distinction. This chart we're looking at on the left, we're really looking at proficiency and achievement. And on the right, we're looking at growth, specific to first grade. That growth measure is a percentile, and that's from fall to fall. So how did students grow from last fall to this fall when they took it at the beginning of the year? So what this data tells us, about 38% of our students in kindergarten are really ready for grade-level learning. And in first grade, about 60% of our students are ready for that grade-level learning. And then that growth percentile is showing us that our first graders are in the 76th percentile for growth compared to other first graders across the nation. And that's that fall-to-fall data. So because we didn't have some historical data to compare that Dibbles, that Acadents to Dibbles 8, you really can't compare those. They're two different assessments. We added this information, which is just another piece of information to take in. This is STAR Early Literacy. So again, our kindergartners and our first graders. And what you're seeing here is how are our kindergartners coming to school prepared to learn? And you'll just notice a little bit less prepared, this group, than what we saw last year. And then our first grade students are pretty much the same last year from this year. And then on the next slide, you'll see our second graders and third graders almost at the same level when they've come to school. So we're definitely looking at two different groups of students here, right? Second graders last year and then our second graders this year. But just a note of comparison on how students are coming to school ready to learn. So some literacy initiatives we wanted to share with you at the beginning of the year. So firstly, we've implemented a district progress monitoring schedule for Dibbles 8 that's aligned across zones. And that will enable us to monitor the fidelity of progress monitoring for students who, especially who are performing below and well below, but also those students who are performing at levels to making sure they're not falling behind as they go through the school year. We're providing some district-level training and alignment. An example of that is our SIPs intervention program. And then our coaching, our professional development is coaching-focused. And that's really focused on instructional and modeling of best teaching practices. And Yuki is building the capacity of teachers by really just walking side-by-side with them. It's truly a hands-on approach to professional development that's received some really, really positive feedback from zone leaders, coaches, and teachers. And then finally, the implementation of Dibbles 8 was really a pretty significant change that required training over the summer. Its implementation success really is attributed to our teachers and their commitment and dedication to students and this assessment. And this is just a picture we shared of Yuki in the classroom, coaching and working with teachers. You can go to the next slide.
So we had an opportunity, it's probably five or six weeks ago, to connect with the district to continue conversations around the Dibbles 8 data. We started with, meeting with all schools together here. And what our focus was, was really around the new measures and really prioritizing what we were focused on. Based off the district-level conversation, we then broke it into an opportunity for schools to be able to collaborate with their school-level teams and walk away with action plans based off where they saw the needs and the strengths within their school. One thing that we're looking to do is, as we move to kind of the zone-level initiative, is we wanted to create opportunities. Because one of the things we know is there's a lot of good practice happening in District 49. And different things are happening at different schools. And there was a comment last year during one of our zone-level meetings where, you know, somebody mentioned that, you know, if we know this thing works, how are we then taking that and moving that across districts? So one of the things that we're really doing with these meetings is to be able to identify what those practices are. Because we can say, you know, something's happening at the school. But what we really want to do is we want to build capacity at the district level to be able to identify specifically what those things are. You know, we can say, hey, we're using Hagerty. But maybe the implementation of the program, maybe there's other elements within that. So if we can get really specific with what we're looking for, then if we can identify it, we can obviously replicate it and put it across schools in the district. So that's one of the things we're gonna be really focused on during these primary literacy meetings, is to be bringing artifacts, examples, hands-on things that we can really experience and see when it comes to things that schools are doing successfully. So.
We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Students, any questions? Did I get you with a full mouth? I was trying. No questions? Okay. From time to time, I'll ask you if you have any questions, so I don't mess you. Jamie Lynn, anything?
Thank you for the presentation and the explanation of how Dibbles 8 is different from Acadents from last year. And it's not really comparable, very clearly not comparable. And you guys have implemented it very well. And I'm excited to see the growth throughout the school year, especially when we get into the middle-of-the-year assessments to see where those kindergartners end up going. Because it looks like they make good growth once they get into that first year, in first grade year. So thank you again for all the data. And kudos to the third-grade team with the fourth-grade students at the beginning of the year. And fourth-grade team, they shined above everybody with their scores, which was really cool. So that's attributed to not only the fourth-grade teachers, but also the third-grade teachers who had them previously. And everybody else who had them previously in kindergarten, first, and second.
Absolutely.
Laurie?
I really appreciate how with the changes you tried to give us more of an equalized comparison, which is hard to do. So I just appreciate the effort you put into the presentations. So thank you.
You're welcome. Our pleasure.
Rick?
So just a couple of things. First of all, are we doing anything to work on getting those kindergartners before they get to us? Because like, I was, if you want to back up to that slide for a minute, it struck me that that was, that was a little bit material, the difference in readiness from last year to this year. And if that was a trend, that would scare the bejebers out of me. Because what it really means is that we've just created like a whole new year of school, almost, that we're gonna have to add to our system in order to get our kids up to speed. And maybe I'm missing something there, but.
No, absolutely.
That's question number one.
Yeah, that's a great question. And we've had that conversation around what students need as they come into kindergarten and what can we maybe be doing in our preschools in terms of phonemic awareness and letter naming? Because on those, that kindergarten assessment where those, you know, almost 50% of our kindergartners are showing up at risk, you know, those two areas are heavily weighted. So the area of letter naming, do they know their letter names? And do they know, can they recognize sounds? So no attachment to letters, but can they recognize sounds? So I think that's something we can talk about with our preschool programs and how, what can we implement in terms of Hagerty or a letter naming? So we have been having those conversations about how can we get them more ready for kindergarten? It's a great question. Did you want to say anything to that?
No, I mean, I agree with that. I think there's a lot of opportunity to do some reflection and to take some actions prior to kindergarten. But I think one thing from the flip side is that as we look at first-grade level data, we anticipated that it was, you know, that students may come in maybe not as prepared. And so what we actually noticed, even though we can't do a side-by-side comparison with the previous test, is that they actually came in and made pretty good growth even within this, within Dibbles 8. So I think, I think that's encouraging because what I think it speaks to is the fact that we have put things in place and those things still did have a positive impact on first-grade data, first-grade level data. So and obviously, if we can get ahead of the game, knowing what we know now with Dibbles 8 at kindergarten level, you know, we can, we can even accelerate that growth more, so.
So my second question is more of an observation than a question, but the... I don't count well. You know, we're talking literacy, not math. Come on. So I really, really like to hear that we are kind of cross-pollinating best practice through the district. That, to me, is super exciting. With all the great quality people we've got in this district that have learned some great things and the great work you guys have done and learned, to be able to spread that all around, I just, I have a feeling we're gonna have some really good soup come out of all this. And I'm very excited for the district going forward.
So I'm not gonna be as nice, right? Parental involvement is the key to getting students where you need them to be. And what these charts are showing me is our students are coming in to kindergarten, first grade, less prepared. When I hear from principals that we have a larger percentage of students not even being able to speak, let alone they can't repeat the alphabet, it's a problem. And it's a problem at home. So, kind of agree. Pre-K, what can we do in pre-K? But we should also be considering, Mr. Hiltz, innovation. What can we do to prepare parents? We do a science of reading for people who teach reading. What about a science of reading for parents? What about a summer, you know, parent class where we're teaching parents how to teach their kids how to read? I guarantee you, not everyone knows how to teach their kids how to read. That will help close the gap. Secondly, and I'm really glad, and this isn't on you guys, really glad I'm here in best practices, because I've been repeating that for eight years, almost eight years. We need a system at the district level to capture best practices and lessons learned from across the district. Typically, it's just a, you know, data capture, people input. You know, they can input it from the schools and all. This isn't on you guys. I love what you're doing. But we have to do that, and this board has to discuss it and direct it. A best-practice lessons-learned system that anybody in the district can share. And they can look it up, too. We do it in the Marine Corps, we do it in other corporations and businesses. Let's do it here. Let's take that lead. But have a system that everyone can use. So I love that you guys are doing that. And, you know, maybe it's a campaign during the summer to, you know, we push things out to the parents, not just new parents, but existing parents, too. And yes, we have to get them involved. And the last thing I'd like to say is, I love the nonsense word fluency. I probably would excel in that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Very good. New and revised student fees, Mr. Springs. With a little jump in the step today. New and revised student fees, Mr. Sprems, with a little jump in the step today.
Yep.
Bear with me, Ron. While they're preparing, I just want to let everyone know, there's kind of a bet going on here between those two and the rest of these board and me. They, they're betting me that I cannot end this meeting by eight o'clock. So, so I'm going to give them their wish and try to make it last till about ten o'clock.
I'm, I'm here to help.
Depends on how Ron goes on this one.
Uh, good evening, Board. Uh, Ron Sprems, Director of Finance. Uh, one of the things I'm super proud about, uh, from, from what we do, the work that we do in our office, is the, the bulk at the back of the budget that has every activity, uh, fee that the district, um, imposes on, uh, on, on our students and kids. It's all in that, in the back of that budget. Um, the amount of the fee and, uh, what, what that fee goes towards, the, what we're going to buy with those fees. Um, inevitably, every year, fees get missed. And so, this is just a quick catch-up for, um, as the school's year got started, we start collecting these as, as, uh, schools call us and say, oh, my gosh, this didn't get on the list. And I'm like, all right, I'll put it on the list. We'll get it, we'll get it re-approved, uh, in, uh, November. So, uh, again, n- no surprises on here. Um, a lot of them were fees that we currently had that just got missed when we did, uh, when we did the package. I think there are three new ones on here, but nothing looked, uh, out of, out of whack. There's a, uh, a, an Accuplacer retest fee, um, an esports fee, that's, that's new. And then, uh, a math fee at Vista Ridge High School for, uh, ten dollars. So, again, nothing, nothing earth-shattering here. Um, just, just to catch up, uh, on the fees that were missed in that first, um, go-around. Any questions?
Yes. I, I, I see, uh, in the Power Zone, a, uh, I understand the adventure PE and the AP stuff, but then I, I see a ten-dollar proposed fee for math. I mean, doesn't everyone take math in high school? What, what is that ten-dollar fee for?
Well, let's go down and look.
It's on the second, uh, it's on the first page, actually.
Well, I, yeah, I, but the, the details are down here.
I'm sorry.
So, here's what it is. And so, it's a math fee for Vista Ridge, uh, and that ten dollars goes to digital license and supplies.
Just, uh, I'm of the opinion, and I think you, you do that and the schools really do that, is we have to make sure that our parents aren't paying any more than they have to. We also have to make sure that our teachers are not subsidizing classroom expenses as well without getting reimbursed if we can reimburse them. I've, I've been kind of on the, uh, path of that for several years, as well as stipends for teachers to prepare their classrooms and to buy supplies so it's not coming out of their paycheck.
Hundred percent.
So, I know money's tight, but, uh, anybody else? Jamie Lynn?
Um, the topic of fees, um, has come up several times in different conversations. The main concern is why are there like so many different fees depending on the different schools or the different zones that we're in? And, uh, I do, I am very concerned about having a ten-dollar fee for math. Uh, I don't think that, that they're going to have a ten-dollar fee if they go to Falcon for math or if they go to Sand Creek for math. So, why do we have a ten-dollar fee to have math at Vista? I don't feel like that's very equitable, to use a word that I don't really like. But, um, I, I, I just, I'm just saying that I, I don't, I, and, and parents have actually brought this to, to my attention as well of, there's a fee for this and a fee for that and a fee for this and a fee for this. Um, where is the decision coming from? Um, how is that determined? Why is it different? And, um, sometimes there's fees that parents are like, I don't even know what this is going towards. Um, and so, we need to really get a handle on this, this fee problem that we're having. Um, I can understand fees for sports. That's normal for equipment, et cetera. Uh, I wouldn't want to have it where we're buying brand-new equipment every year or brand-new jerseys every year. I think we could really think about, um, being resourceful with that. Um, and so, I don't know if I can approve that ten-dollar math fee. That's my own opinion. Um, and I understand the AP, but I know that, um, from what I've heard, that the ECLAC had been working on a proposal, um, for AP fees to be waived, or AP tests. I guess this is not the test fee. This is, uh, just to take the class. Is that what am I, my understanding? Is this just a fee to take the class or is that?
Let's go down and find out. AP lit. So, this is, uh, for books and an AP exam.
So...
Mr. Graham, may I comment on this?
Absolutely, please. But if we don't hit eight o'clock, I don't want to hear it.
I enjoyed driving across Montana when they had an Autobahn. And you could drive as fast as you wanted, consistent with safe conditions. But in Washington State, you could only drive fifty-five miles an hour. And that's because in our federal system, states have different standards and we enjoy that, that diversity of leadership. Historically in District 49, we have had more of a federal approach than a centralized national approach. And that approach has granted autonomy in how different zones handle their budgets. For example, um, Mr. Horses, is Dustin here? Okay. Dustin, you guys are not charging students for AP tests this year, correct? Okay. So, that is something that, that the Sand Creek Zone has decided to do as a, uh, as a differentiator. They have decided to prioritize that the, the school, the zone in the school are funding those AP exams. The Power Zone is not choosing to do that. And so, if we centralize or nationalize, to use my governmental metaphor, if we nationalize all of these fees, um, budgets reflect priorities. And so, there is some priority that is driving the decision in the Sand Creek Zone that is different than a priority that's driving the decision in the Power Zone, for example. Um, this board has a pretty strong impulse to centralize or nationalize all of these decisions. You passed a resolution tonight that, that at least equips you to centralize curriculum, if not, if not leads you to do that. And so, what you are observing, and you may not be comfortable with it, but what you're observing is the fruit of almost twenty years of commitment to educational innovation and differentiation. The idea of choice is that local leaders know better than you do and they know better than I do what's going to work in their community. And that, that commitment to innovation and autonomy has served us very well in a lot of areas, but we've also discovered some limitations. And so, I want to just observe that, that the differences in fees are not arbitrary. They're definitely not random. They are a reflection of the fact that different zones with different legacies of leadership have made, have set different priorities and therefore created different budgets.
So, my question is, is there a way for those, the leaders who are making the decisions to possibly be talking with one another on, hey, what are you guys doing in this area? Um, what, I mean, opening a, a, a channel of communication, not just saying, hey, we're all going to be the same, but being aware that the community, the community does have a sense of, like, of, um, why is this so different when my child was at this school and then they ended up at this school or, um, they switched schools and then all these prices changed? So, um, just having that communication flow between leadership because it does feel like there's a lot of fees associated with Vista.
Was that a question to me?
No, that was a question to district leadership and, uh, zone leaders.
Y- okay, if that's not a, if that's not a rhetorical question, which is how I hear, I wa- I was hearing it. Um, what you're asking for already exists. It may not exist to your satisfaction, but it is already part of our program. In fact, our whole, our entire budgeting process begins with conversations between zone superintendents and the budget office to do a process we call normalization. Um, a- and I'll, I'll be a little bit direct here. Without that commitment to innovation and autonomy, we wouldn't have allies. Because allies doesn't make sense at scale, but by trying it in one place and scaling it up from a program to a school within a school, to a standalone school in modulars, to a school in, right? That all happened because our budget, um, agility allowed us to differentiate programs. We also wouldn't have the legacy that we've had of the Health Sciences Academy at Falcon High School. We also wouldn't have some of the programs in engineering and design that we've enjoyed at Sand Creek High School. And I'm just talking about high schools. I could probably go on for a while, which nobody wants to do and John wants to be out at eight. But the point is that we say very clearly that we are the best choice. And choice implies innovation and autonomy and a, a menu. And if, if you offer a menu, the dishes don't all cost the same. They don't all have the same ingredients. They may not even not all be to the same quality. And so, some of our zones have chosen to emphasize some things appropriately at the cost of others. Our, our zone superintendents and principals and certainly financial folks are constantly talking to each other about these trade-offs. Then, after all that has happened, you have to factor in what happens with enrollment from year to year. And so, we have, we have a significant difference right now between, uh, the, the enrollment levels in the three zones. And that's something that we have to be adaptive to as well. Did that answer your question, Ms. Devola?
Um, partially. I wasn't necessi- I wasn't talking about, um, allies or things like that. I'm talking about budget. But regardless, um, when, I have another question for you. With the proposed fees, are these fees that are going to be implemented this year?
These, y- yes. So...
Are parents going to be aware of this or do we have a way of, because I would feel like parents should know that these fees are going to happen.
Uh, I, I believe these have been communicated already. Um, a lot of times what happens is, this isn't an overnight collection of data that happens. Um, this is as the school year gets going, um, we have a, uh, a fee that was missed, that was charged the previous year. And that's like, okay, we'll put that, we'll put that on the list. And so, these fees have probably already been assigned and have been collected. Um, we'd like to get them, uh, put in front of the board and, uh, approved because they are subject to free and reduced reimbursement. And that's why I'm going through this process.
Rick?
Well, I, I would just like to suggest that if the, if the future board wants to discuss more of this federalization or whatever, uh, analogy that, that we're using for this, that, that, that might be appropriate. But, uh, I don't know that in the scope of this entire list of fees, that that ten-dollar, um, fee, I think the total amount was twelve thousand five hundred dollars was projected and there was a reduction to that to boot. So, you know, it's, it, this isn't, um, th- this isn't like a, a really material piece for us. I think this could be talked about longer term, but I, I don't know that we need to not move this along over a twelve-thousand-dollar item.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but is this all of the fees? This isn't all of the fees.
This is just the fees that were missed from the original approval back in, I believe, May.
Okay.
Yeah, we already approved those.
Right.
The bulk of them.
Right. These are changes to additional, changes.
Additions to correct.
Well, we have to vote on these, so...
Uh, again, we'd like to have them, uh, uh, voted on and approved just be, uh, because they are subject to free and reduced reimbursement.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, any further questions? Students! Go ahead. Got to identify yourself first.
Oh, I'm Ava. Um, so, with the, like, increase in fees, um, even like specifically people who like aren't qualified for free and reduced lunch, um, like these fees might like scare them away. Do you have any plans for like helping those families, um, so that they're like able to do like extracur- cur- cur- curriculums and AP classes?
Uh, if I heard that correctly, it was, uh, to, did, did you say that these fees, are these fees subject to free and reduced?
Um, no. Is there, well, I guess I'm saying like, would it, um, it would like scare me away if, like, prices for, like, extracurriculars were like higher and I wouldn't be able to do them, even though, for example, if I wasn't like qualified for free or reduced lunch. Um, so, how do you think that would like affect students and is there anything we can do about that? If that makes sense.
I, I think it does make sense. I think that's a discussion, um, that has to be made at the school level. Uh, the principals and zone leaders need to have that discussion to talk about the, the increase in fees. Um, unfortunately, we're living in, in a time right now where we're seeing incredible in- inflationary, um, costs. And so, um, essentially fees are going to be going up to, to cover those inflationary costs. But, uh, yeah, uh, again, I think that's a discussion that has to be made at the, at the school level. Uh, so bring that up with your, with your principal and have them talk to their zone leader and go from there.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, are we ready to, uh, get consensus to move this forward or not?
Yes.
Yes. No.
No. It's a tie. So, we will not move it forward and, uh, it'll come back on, uh, at a later time. Mr. Hiltz, you're up. Superintendent Evaluation Metrics. For the other topic, uh, Director Devola, if you would, uh, email me any of your concerns at that at a later date. Okay? I don't, I don't know if I captured them all.
Good evening, Peter Hiltz, Superintendent. And for this topic, what we're talking about is how the board evaluates me. And through about six months of conversation, including outside consultants, um, followed by a, a longer process deciding to go to a superintendent model, followed by an additional round of discussions about, um, how then, now that we have a superintendent, how then ought we evaluate that individual. We landed on this general concept that academics ought to pick up about sixty percent of my evaluation, uh, or the evaluation, I'll use, I'll use it more generically, the superintendent, because it won't be my, won't be me forever. Um, and we want to create a system that is not really related to a person or an individual, but to the position. So, what we're seeing in this division is that we want academic performance to count for six out of ten and operations to count for four out of ten. But then, within each of those categories, we want a split between the objective components and the subjective components. Subjective components matter. Mr. Graham, as you've observed, perception is reality. I disagree with that conclusion, but the impulse to honor perception is important because it does matter, especially with our workforce and with people who have choices. It matters whether or not they, um, perceive that the superintendent is effective. And so, this split allows us to honor both objective data, that which can be quantified and, and categorized and numerically identified, and subjective data, which can also be quantified and, and categorized, but it isn't tied to some objective standard. So, the sixty-forty split and then within each of the big divisions, sixteen-forty, you have an eighty-twenty weighting. And that carries down into another visualization of the same idea. Some people like to see the pie chart. It's a little bit more objective. It means that right at half of the superintendent evaluation will be based on objective academic data. And then, a big part of it will be on objective oper- And then a big part of it will be on objective operational data. Not only are we a system of schools and we need to operate those schools effectively, but we're also a big enterprise, the largest employer in our, our geographic boundary. And we're a hundred million dollar, actually $300 million budget. We're a big shop and we need to operate like a big shop and we need to operate with efficiency and effectiveness. And the superintendent should have a lot to do with both of those. So then we get here, and I will bump this up so that you can see a little bit more. What we've done here, and I say we because Mr. Graham and especially Ms. Devola and Mr. Van Weeran, we've been talking about this, all of us in different meetings for several months. And we've identified a series of measures on the left hand that can then be translated into a score. And so we'll just start with the simplest one, and I won't go through every one of these, but any of them that you have questions on, I'm happy to talk to you about them. So let's just use the, the number of points earned on the district performance framework. That is the Colorado Department of Education framework where we are assigned a number out of 100 points possible. And in the current year, our score is 45. And that means that in the current year, in that first row, I would have earned one point out of four. That then would get weighted in the second chart on this page. So that one point from here, because our result, ours is result in this chart, our result is under 50. And so that would get weighted down here. And instead of my score being eight, because I wouldn't have earned a four, I would have earned a one, then I, I would have gotten, the multiplier would have been one times eight, not four times eight. In almost all of the years that I have been in leadership, our score would have been in either this two band or this three band. We've been in both of these places. In the years just before Goal Academy joined our ratings, we were actually in this band. We were, we were in the high 60s and low 70s on our DPF. So that's just one example. And so what I've done is I've attempted to create these ranges based in part on some historical performance and based in part on some comparative best practices. Some of it is trying to listen to the board and I explicitly asked you, y'all remember? I said, what does it feel like to you should be the baseline expectation? Well, this third item here, that's the school performance framework, SPF. 53 is the number that gets a school to the performance band. So we thought, okay, that makes sense. And it makes sense then, I'm meeting expectations when 16 or 17 out of 20 operated schools are in the performance band. So that means you have a fault tolerance or a failure tolerance of three schools at most a year. And in years when more than 17 of our schools meet performance, then I'm exceeding expectations. There's a theory under the Carver School of Governance and just governance, leadership generally, that the performance of the executive, in this case the superintendent, is, is coextensive or identical to the performance of the organization. And that's what a lot of these rows say. They say that my performance is the performance of District 49 and District 49's performance is my performance, which is reasonable for your senior executives. So all of these lines then have ranges that are built off to the right. I could have colored these columns blue, like, you know, the colors like they are on, on the Dibbles and Pryor Acadians, but you get the idea. These, these are the four levels of performance. One that we have had some discussion about is the fifth item down, which is the total of chartered schools that improve their SPF year over year. Anything here that says improves is a growth measure. It's not an achievement measure, it's a growth measure. And so we want to make sure that our schools aren't just achieving 53 points or better, but that they're improving year over year. We're not satisfied, good enough isn't good enough. So we want to make sure we're improving. And so in years that schools improve their SPF, you'll notice that the, the bar is actually a little bit, it, it's harder to exceed expectations. We literally have to have all of our schools improve to exceed expectations. That's a tough, tough bar, but I take that challenge. We also acknowledge that charter schools contribute to our DPF. And so that's why the total of charter schools improving their SPF is also a factor. And again, that bar is very high, to, to reach the exceeds level, we would have to have almost all, all but one in the current year of our charter schools. But you'll notice that that chartered SPF trend has a very low weight. So although the charter school performance is bundled into the DPF, trend and level, where it's broken out by itself, it's a very minor part of the evaluation. Because bluntly, I shouldn't get a lot of credit when charter schools perform well and I shouldn't get a lot of blame when they perform well. I do not control their performance, but if I'm doing my job correctly, I influence their performance. And so we're, we're assigning a value of 2% to the amount of influence I can have over a charter school. So I would happily stop there and answer questions that you might have about specific lines or categories or ranges. You can see down here a recapitulation of how those percentages add up to 100. And you can see here, in my hypothetical year, I did really well. It's awesome to get 100 out of 100. If the board adopts this set of metrics, I'm going to take our current year performance. I'm going to create kind of a notional rating that I would have earned this year. We've all discussed that it's not fair to hold me to a standard that didn't exist when I, when I contracted and took the position, but it's still useful information. We can call it kind of a pseudo baseline for future goal setting and prioritization.
Any comments from Jamie Lynn or Rick, who headed this up for the board?
Yeah, we worked a lot of months trying to get this worked out and I appreciate you in your team helping to, to distill what we had requested. That was not an easy feat, for sure. Now that you've explained it very well, I do have one question slash concern. I know that with the total of charter schools improving, you had mentioned that is growth data. So it's not going to be based on achievement, that would be their growth numbers, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and I know that the higher you go, the harder it is to grow.
We call that the ceiling effect.
Right, so I'm questioning whether or not. I don't know, what do you guys think? Because the higher, the higher you achieve-
The question is, do you want to hold the superintendent responsible for academic achievement of charter schools? Which I don't know that, you know, I'd have to really get into the language of the contract. Now, Mr. Hiltz is certainly responsible for our execution of that contract. But is he responsible for whether the school achieves or not? And that's why it's a low weight.
Yeah, that's why we, we originally had it at 4% and we reduced it to two. Because like we said, they are very independent.
Autonomous, yeah.
Yeah, autonomous to be.
Rick? My, my main comment would just be, this does reflect what I believe we've been discussing and, and kind of intentionally kind of getting toward. And I'll echo what Jamie Lynn said and that I appreciate you distilling this into very concrete pieces. And, and I actually look forward to seeing kind of what that hypothetical looks like from this year based on, on what you just described, you were going to do as a next step with this. I think this is, this is what we've needed, is something that is a objective process that is not just based on opinion and, and whatnot, but is, is based on real stuff. And I, I like it. I think it's going to, I think it's going to help the future boards to be able to do this much more effectively. And do we have all of the rubrics of it exactly the way they have to be? I'm guessing that some of this will tweak over time and that next year, you know, somebody's going to say, gee, the, the R should really be something different and, or whatever. But I think this is a great starting point.
Thank you. Mr. Hiltz with, or Lori, go ahead.
First, I wanted to thank Rick and Jamie Lynn for working so hard on this. I also like that the way it's weighted between objective over subjective, principles over personalities and something that can be weighted and measured. And I also like the fact that there is a lower percentage applied towards charter schools because of their, there, each one has a different curriculum basis, mission statement, so to speak. And so I think it's good to have it as part of the whole, but, but to weight it lower than the ones where you have a little bit more direct oversight and control over. So I just wanted to thank Rick and Jamie Lynn for their hard work.
With 10 of our 30-something schools, 31 schools I think it is, being charter schools, is the SPF at a category weight of two really realistic? Or should we focus more on the execution of the contracts?
This evaluation document sets a higher bar for charter school performance than our current contract. All of you have heard me say, I'm dissatisfied with the academic expectations in our current contracts. Publicly, openly, these are all openly adopted contracts available in board docs. Our contracts require that our charter schools be on track to perform at the state's improvement level. Not even to be an improvement, but to be on track to improve. And so I think there's a different question as we come through a new contracting cycle. The board will need to grapple with whether that academic level sets an appropriate expectation for charter school performance.
Thank you.
I would fight for us to calibrate the expectation of our contract to match the expectation of our charter schools. Because I don't think we have a single charter school that aspires to be an improvement.
Okay, no, that's fair. And, but that's going to be contract execution.
Yes, sir.
It's going to be contract development, contract execution, and that'll be brought to the board as contracts come. And I, I would say that the soft bigotry of low expectations is a bad thing. And having high expectations of our individual district operated schools and our charter, individual charter schools is a good thing. So that is a side discussion or a future discussion, I'm not against it at all. But I did want to ask you about contract, about that one question. Are we prepared to move this forward? I'm going to assume Mr. Hiltz is okay with this? Jamie Lynn and Rick, who were involved in developing it, are okay with it?
May I make one final observation?
Okay.
Nowhere on this evaluation metric rubric, nowhere in any of this, does it say if I earn a 70, I automatically renew? Or if I earn a 40, I'm automatically terminated? You get to decide as a board year over year. You might say, you know what, your score is 50. That's not good enough, but we're going to give you another chance. Or you might say, your, your score is 60 during COVID, remarkable, way to go. Until we apply this metric, or these metrics, to real data, we don't even, I don't know. I haven't done it yet because you haven't adopted it yet. I don't know what my score would be. I think it's going to be between about 60 to 70. That might be the right range. Or you might say, no, Mr. Hiltz, we want to target 80. Okay, we can't do that until we've set a baseline. And so I am comfortable moving this forward to set a baseline.
Okay, and you two are as well, so consensus to move forward for a vote on November 9th?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
I would have paddled you if, but we froze the clock there for a minute. Okay, so now we're on to revision of policy KEC?
I've been paddled, but not by a board president.
Oh, by the way, the board should also consider advocating for another level in the performance framework. Performance is 47% high. There should really be an exceeds or a, a, a level of distinction in there, and that would be at the state level. So that's something that you two and a future CASB, future, you know, legislative liaison, Amy Atwood, could, could push for. To have an additional one that we can get even higher to achieve.
I'm going to use artificial intelligence to keep track of who's talking too much. May I proceed? This item is recommended revisions to policy KEC. There are two documents in board docs. One is a version that has the longer title and that is the, the final version without the red line visible of the other. And I, I made a mistake in titling the file, but it is also the KEC revision. And that's the one that I have open on screen, that's the one that I'll use to present these changes. This is the policy that, that guides us on how we respond when there are complaints about instructional materials, which would include library materials. Around the state, over the last 18 months, we've seen this become an incredible source of controversy. It's been a time suck, it's been provocative in some cases. And there are districts, including one of our neighbors, that wish they would have revised their policy sooner because it would have added clarity, or they may wish that they had followed their policy. Either way, it's instructive to us, and I want to, I want to make one thing really clear for the board. If a book doesn't belong in our library, it's far better that we never put it there than that we act to remove it. And the reason is, if somebody comes along and makes a complaint against a book and they say, we do not want Huckleberry Finn in our library, you all could manage that. Because according to Supreme Court, Supreme Court case, PICO I believe is the, the reference, in order for you to remove a book from the library, every one of you has to read every page. And then you have to make a determination about the piece of literature as a whole. And you have to be able to defend that you analyzed all of its components. You are not allowed to pick out a paragraph and say, I don't like this paragraph, therefore get it out of the library. If you do that, you'll lose and you'll lose fast and you'll lose big. And that's Huck Finn. And Huck Finn, you could read overnight if you, if you were committed. But what if it's the Brothers Karmazov? Or what if it's Roots, which has some content and is in many of our libraries? Or the autobiography of Malcolm X? You'd have to read every page, you'd have to make an analysis of it as a whole. And so it's far better that we apply scrutiny on the front end than on the back end. But if a complaint comes our way, we also want to make sure that we're in a position to manage those complaints efficiently. So for example, let's say that, let's say that Mr. Van Weeran's evil twin, Rob Van Weeran, were to come in and say, okay, under the current policy, Rob could come in and he could, he could file a complaint about Huck Finn at Falcon High School and Falcon Middle School and Vista and P. He could file seven different complaints about the same book. And under current policy, each one of those principals would have to have to form a committee, run a process, do an evaluation, make a recommendation, and then you'd have to make a decision. So you'd have to read Huck Finn seven times, you wouldn't, that's not true. Conversely, if we had Rob and 19 of his evil friends that all came in and grieved or complained about Huck Finn, we'd have to run an independent committee for each one of them. And this bit the Greeley School District badly. They literally had a complaint group come in and drop 4,000 pages. Literal, physical pieces of paper dropped in the middle of their board meeting. Because their policy wasn't prepared for that. If you approve this policy moving forward and approve it in November, we'll be prepared for that. Because you give me authority to either consolidate multiple complaints from multiple schools about the same book or to consolidate multiple books by the same individual. Either, either way, it's more efficient. We still do a thorough process, we still form a multidisciplinary committee. We present a recommendation that you ultimately adopt or don't. But it, it takes out the possibility that we could be kind of blindsided and, and have to deal with a blizzard of what are really just nuisance complaints intended to clog up the system and, and create inefficiency. The one thing that is more substantive, that's a procedural observation. The thing that is more substantive is the paragraph here in red where I have added to these three controversial categories, religion, ideology, profanity, and obscenity. I've added a fourth category that I call social identity, recognizing that in the, in the time we are in, I've added a fourth category that I call social identity, recognizing that in the in the time we are in. Matters of personal identity, political, gender, ethnic, sexual, those matters have become themselves inherently controversial. And so materials that refer to those ought to be subject to greater scrutiny for neutrality and developmental appropriateness. And so I invite the board to ask me questions, move this forward. Or take other action that seems right to you.
Students, any questions? Go ahead.
I'm Amanda, and just out of curiosity, has this happened to any of our schools so far, like someone come in with a complaint about the curriculum or a book that's been removed?
It has happened, but not recently, we have had, we have had. What I would call informal complaints about materials that have been appropriately resolved at the school level or maybe at the zone level. We haven't had a formal objection submitted to the board. Recently, I I would say at least in the last three years, we have not.
Any other questions from the students? Okay, Jamie Lynn?
Which is a good thing. Anyway, that that tells us there's, there's a lot less in our libraries than surrounding districts, which is great. With, I have a couple. Of questions, and it kind of ties into our resolution that we just passed. With number one, it says that the board recognizes the right of individual parent guardian to request that his or her child not read the book. And then it goes on to say. To the two basic principal texts or program texts and materials the board has adopted. If we move this forward, the this says in here that the board has adopted it. So does that mean with our resolution that we just passed tonight? That 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 resolution will be followed in order for us to adopt the program texts and materials? Because as of right now, the board has not been adopting this, that has been at the zone level.
Or the school level.
School level.
Right? So I think a a key phrase here is basic program texts and materials. The board does not want to get in the business of approving every library purchase or or even every supplemental item. But you do by your resolution tonight want to assert authority over core curricular materials. So for example, we've recently adopted SAVIS as our math curriculum at our three large comprehensive high schools. And that is a curriculum that under the terms of this new resolution, the board has authority. You do not have to exercise that authority, you might say, we delegate that to zone leaders and the superintendent, you all make a recommendation. And then we'll decide if we want to tacitly approve it, explicitly approve it, or or reject it. So you've given yourself authority, that doesn't necessarily mean that you will always practice or exercise that authority. But under this, under the terms of of paragraph one of this instance. Then students would not have the option, well, parents would not have the option on behalf of their child to exempt them from reading. The Pantheon of American History or or the Muggles Method for Math, or whatever you have approved. Or by delegation you have approved for our core curriculum. Did I answer your question?
Yes, and then I also wanted to highlight the last paragraph. It says, in summary, the board assumes final responsibility for all books and instructional materials it makes available to students. Wanted to note that that has will now apply, but previously that actually did not apply to the board. And I just wanted to make a note of that.
May I display the passage you're referencing, please?
Yes, it's the very last paragraph. In summary.
The very last paragraph in the summary.
It's not a red line.
I understand.
It's, it's the very bottom.
The very bottom of the entire document.
Yes.
Okay, that's the footnote.
Keep going, right, stop.
Yep.
Right there. So it says, in summary, the board assumes final responsibility for all books and instructional materials it makes available to students. We've had this in here previously, but actual and actuality that was not true. I just wanted to make a note of that.
Is the RACI matrix on this computer?
Because it was waived.
Okay. So we use something in District Forty Nine called the RACI matrix, it's an acronym for responsible, accountable, consulted, and informed. This paragraph makes it pretty clear that while the board is responsible. We, the employed staff, are accountable. So you're not going to recall yourselves if we end up with bad materials, you're going to fire me or correct me in some way. I think that that has been our practice. The board has held me accountable and. Our other educational leaders accountable.
I'm just glad that we have another layer. And so with that, we we can assume that final responsibility, because we would would know specifically what is in each school. Because it would be brought before the board in order for approval. Final approval.
Anyone else, Rick?
I'd like to support moving this forward, I appreciate you looking out for. The potentials that can come up in the future, and I appreciate the proactive nature of this, so thank you.
Lori?
Just one brief comment that if anybody's ever offended by anything Mark Twain ever wrote, they can just forget him and just read anything written by Samuel Clemens.
And consensus to move forward?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, we're on to discussion on, thank you, Mr. Hiltz.
Thank you.
We're on discussion on creating a subcommittee conduct expectations and policy. I'm going to let Rick lead with this and see if he can get it done in ten minutes.
Okay, a little warning, would have been nice, but so the the whole, the whole discussion on this. Is really about the fact that we've had committees within the district that have been. Dysfunctional of late, and. We don't seem to have a policy on kind of what individual conduct expectation should be in those. And it is my sense that we would have more functional committees. If that policy was in place so that when people volunteer for a committee, they know what the expectations are. And can abide by those or find some other way to serve in the district. So that's the, that's the background anyway.
And so I think Mr. Miller and Mr. Hiltz is going to take the lead on that.
So let me put a little bit of context, we we may have mistitled this slightly, this isn't really about subcommittee conduct. This is really about what are the board's expectations for that group of councils and committees that advise the board? And so I call those the ACTs, it's the C A C Advisory Council, it's the DAC. It is indirectly the SACS that compose the DAC. It is the C LAC, it is the COGS, Champions of Gifted Services, A C. But it doesn't have A C in its title yet, it's PIECE, which is the Association of Parents of Students that are that are multilingual learners. Perhaps their acronym will not survive CDs change, we'll see. So all of these advisory councils and committees, ACTs. Are supposed to advise the board, and they are the Wild West, some of them have a have a charter, the C LAC has a charter from the board. The DAC does not have a charter, but the DAC has statutory basis and bylaws. Which the the COGSAC doesn't yet have, but they do have a, they have a founding mission and vision. So what we're suggesting is that this constellation of ACTs, which really are a great strength. For District Forty Nine, and they're a distinctive, we we have a great commitment, like our DAC is huge compared to many other districts, right? So what we're saying is that these ACTs ought to be sort of aligned and calibrated, they don't need to be perfectly identical, because some of them have statutory foundations, some don't. But they do need to be reasonably similar, for example, it would make sense for a board. To assert its expectations by way of a chartering document, we did a pretty good job of that with the C LAC. Whether we led up to it or not is a different discussion, but we couldn't even have that discussion if we didn't have the charter. Whereas, can you tell me whether or not the Champions of Gifted Services are meeting your expectations? No, you can't, because, exactly, and so. That's another observation, shouldn't. And shouldn't, shouldn't a chartered advisory committee have an identified board liaison who attends and participates?
Yes.
So the thought here is to calibrate this constellation of ACTs. Get them not only to have a kind of bureaucratic consistency. But also a behavioral consistency, which is applying the the strategic priorities on the on the bureaucratic side. And applying the cultural compass on the behavioral side, this is a multi-month process, and most of you will. Well, some of you will not be around to vote on it when it comes to fruition. But it's the kind of thing around which a new board could quickly unify, and and I would appreciate the opportunity to take this into the new year. Probably to the annual planning summit, we might not have all of those charters built by then, but at least we'll say. Every A C shall have a charter, shall have bylaws, shall have defined memberships, shall have. Annual objectives, and every A C shall present to the board at least annually, and every A C shall have a board liaison identified. That's, that's what I mean by this agenda item. And we, this came on Lynette and I a little faster than we expected, so we didn't get all that verbiage into a document. But we'll gladly do that, my my sense of it is that this is very ripe. And it's exactly the kind of topic that we should discuss with a newly composed board at our annual planning summit on February third.
What he said.
Anybody else, questions? I think this is not just individual member conduct. I like that you threw in then the bureaucratic conduct of the committee itself. So, you know, we do need a template for charter. We, you know, what is the mission, what is the purpose? I I did send an email. Of what I expect, I expect the pledge of allegiance to be said at formal meetings of of. Represented by the board, or that's going to be advised the board. So whether that happens or not will be up to another board, but you know, how are they going to create the agenda? How are they going to, you know, are they going to follow Robert's rules loosely, something else, what's the parliamentary procedures? That should all be captured in in this kind of thing. So it's not just individual conduct, it's conduct of. The actual committee. Just like we do conduct of the board. So I think that. The discussion is is basically to direct Mr. Hiltz to do what he said. In forming this policy and a template for. Charter charter and then bring that to the annual planning summit. And and follow through with that with the with the new board, but we would task him with that. Now, you guys okay with tasking?
Yes.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So task, that's a task. Well, we saved six and a half minutes or three and a half minutes. Okay, well, your two minutes over. Okay, Colorado State Standards Discussion, you want to bring that up? Really loosely? I've been looking into the Colorado State Standards and alternatives or complementary standards. And the reason for that is there was a big discussion at CASB, Colorado Association of School Boards concerning. Our standards not being rigorous enough at the state level. We did a resolution stating CASB should support more academically rigorous standards, but it didn't make the cut. Because we were late in submitting it to CASB. And by the time it was, it was time for the floor. For people to bring things to the floor, I didn't bring it to the floor because everyone was pretty worn out. So I think that this district should take the lead in looking at the Colorado State Standards. It's not that they're. If I, I talk to both political sides, and they all agree that they're not rigorous academically. And so. Colorado standards, at least in history and geography, things like that, tend to be more skill based. So it is the role of a board of education to determine if they want some standards that would complement those skills. You know, and I've talked to several different entities. And talking to different states, Mr. Hiltz and I had talked about this, did you want to bring up your little chart of? How you can tie in academic performance to rigorous standards and what other states are doing, you showed me the other day? No, he doesn't want to do that. Told him to be ready for it, I said I was going to bring it up, okay, but if you look at states that are performing. In this nation, the ones that are performing have rigorous academic standards. And the reason why, one reason why Colorado does not have academic, they're not as rigorous or or. Content based is because they leave that up to local control to determine. You know, whether it's going to be curriculum or it's going to be the content, and so this does fall into. What we could approve, we're not replacing Colorado standards. But we would look for something that would complement them from the content area. And I say, you know, you you start with social studies, geography, pick a grade, we can compare them. And then if there's holes in any particular set of standards, we can also develop that. By tasking the administration to look into. Content standards and make recommendations for the future board, maybe at the annual planning summit, to compare them. Not not even to vote, but to compare them. Me, I'd be ready to vote on different standards tonight. Because I've looked into it, but our community hasn't looked into it, our schools haven't looked into it, our teachers haven't looked into it, so we have to do the learn. Work towards a solution, and then the lead once a decision is made. So that's why I wanted it on the on the schedule, because I wanted to make sure that this is part of a discussion that we probably should have had last year. We didn't have it because there was a lot of noise and other things going on, so I'm trying to get discussions on the last few things. That I had wanted on agendas and that I know the board had, Jamie Lynn?
Yes. The the scope of this conversation is actually very broad, and we want to be able to narrow it down as well. What's really important is making sure that we have good discussions with our social studies teachers. Because the social studies teachers are the ones that are in the classroom, they're the ones that have to delve into the standards. And what is important is knowing that they have a good scope and sequence and unit maps in order to to fulfill. Things that are expected, and that actually ties into the discussion of. Of graduation requirements, that's also something that those high school teachers should be very much a part of. Because I know there's been discussion and sometimes very heated discussion on what should be required for those seniors to graduate. Based on the what we currently have or what this this the state requires that students graduate with. For example, with U S history. In in talking with some social studies teachers, that U S history. Should be a requirement, but sometimes a student can actually choose not to take U S history. Instead, they can take a subcategory such as sociology, et cetera, that's my understanding from what I've been told. I don't think that's, I really don't think that's right. You should have to take U S history and world, world history, and I would be very interested to know what the social studies teachers think.
And your, your perception is actually accurate, so. How would we task the administration to further look into this? We could do it now, we could do it at a future meeting, but is is if you don't have anything, if we don't have anything prepared now, let's bring it up at a future meeting. Because we have to do that tasking soon in order to prepare for the annual planning summit, or really before the end of the school year. For the next board, so it's just, it's just, this is a conversation, we don't have to task right now unless someone has something prepared. But it gives the administration an idea of the direction that at least two of you are moving towards, and. One I've tried to get for a few years, Rick? And one I'd try to get for a few years. Rick?
So I am concerned about distraction for the administration right now. As we try to get everybody aligned toward moving to our big hairy audacious goal of being accredited with distinction. And part of being accredited with distinction involves actually performing better against the current state standards. And it is my perception that we're just really getting our heads around how the current state standards actually have been used. To kind of grade us and that it might make a lot more sense for, uh. As the new board to address this, um, after we've got kind of some new benchmarks and new, um. Initiatives under our belts as far as, uh, achieving those, those higher numbers that, that we've been, uh, targeting. I have no problem with the idea that we need to look at some of these, especially graduation requirements. I think that that's probably one of the, the key areas, but I just, I, I would like to make sure that, you know. When we're talking about doing that stuff, that we're not losing sight of the fact that we're not having enough of our kids taking the SATs. And that they're not scoring high enough on them. Uh, the, we have benchmarks that we're not hitting now. And so coming up with new ones, to me, uh, seems like it could have the, um, effect of. Of actually dispersing energy that should be focused very much on trying to, trying to hit our goals.
I actually have a response to Rick, but I'd like to hear from Lori first.
Just a little while ago, they were talking about raising the bar instead of approaching performance meets or exceeds. And I don't see why this wouldn't apply here.
I no longer have a response for Rick because Lori nailed it. The bottom line is, we do, every person I've talked to on both sides of the political aisle, at CDE. And at CASB and, uh, you know, and some throughout the state, basically say that. You need involved parents, you need rigorous academic standards, and you need effective instruction. Effective instruction is under our control. We can do professional development. We can do best practices and lessons learned. We can pay our teachers more so that the highly effective teachers stay in our district. And new teachers that will be trained to be highly effective wanna come here if we get the MLO. But that's up to our community. We, there are things we can do. And higher standards, higher expectations is what's gonna get us to those big hairy audacious. Goals. So, uh, yes, Jamie Lynn?
Can I recommend a tasking for administration?
Absolutely.
Um, I would recommend ta- tasking the administration, um, to, um. To reach out to our social studies teachers in, across, uh, across the district. Um, to have some sort of council meeting about the specific issue. Uh, whether that's a discussion on what we can do with scope and sequence or the, the unit maps. Or what that means for Colorado State Standards, how we integrate that. Um, I think that that would be our first step in knowing whether or not these socials or these, uh. Colorado State Standards need to be, um, changed or approved, et cetera.
Or complimented. So basically, what I hear you saying is, uh, we task the administration. And we'll have to figure out timelines, but we task the administration with developing a task force made of, of our social studies professionals. To determine. What needs to be improved. And maybe we start with the social studies and eventually you'll have, you know, we already kind of did that with math. What do we need to improve? We did that with math. Primary literacy. We did that with primary literacy. So eventually, you know, maybe we look into different content areas over time. To s- and get that professional educator input. As to how to improve that, but let's start with social studies. That's what I hear you be saying.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting.
And that, that's part of the learn.
Yeah, and, and even though it's not tested on a regular basis, um, which I think it should be. But that's, nor here, there, that, nor there, but, um, that's, it's important. I think the foundation of our society and our country rests on the fact that we know our history. World history, US history, constitution, government, uh, finances. And I think this is extremely important, um, with our current state of our country. Uh, that we, we start with social studies in this, uh, area.
As part of this, would you want to be like kind of the liaison so you can figure out timelines and stuff like that?
Yes.
Back to the board, okay. Do I have consensus for that tasking?
Yes.
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 It's future tasking, Rick. It's not gonna happen in a week.
Yes.
Okay, microphone.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Graham, let me respond to that tasking, please.
Yes.
Um, it said that a goal is a dream with a deadline. So you've just shared your dream of, of a future, um. That after this process, we will have made some, some adjustments and improvements. No, you wouldn't be tasking me if you didn't think there were improvements to be had. You, you, you're directing us to, to do what it needs to improve.
After being tasked, the next question is, what do you think's a realistic timeline?
Okay, so that, what I'm about to tell you, you're not going to like. If this outcome.
We have a report tomorrow.
Were to give us, no, if this outcome were to give us, um, would, it were to indicate that we should change the sequence of courses. Or adopt new core curriculum or even new course configurations, the earliest we could implement that. And, and it would be a push, but the earliest we could possibly implement that would be August of twenty twenty-five.
I know.
These things are slow-moving. They take time to dialogue and so, so that's gonna be, um. Now, the good news is, what you are contemplating is the way that most school districts have done curriculum review for many generations. Certainly fifty, sixty years. They often do it on a seven-year cycle where they do a different subject every year. They form a committee. They, uh, review what's the state of the art of curriculum. You're actually pushing us one level upstream from curriculum to standards. So you want us to do a standards and curriculum and instructional review that incorporates consideration of course sequence. Course titles, right? That, that's the, the whole kettle of fish and nobody wants half the kettle of fish. Um, in the meantime, long preamble to this statement. I trust our principals and our teachers are already delivering the best social studies instruction they know how to deliver. They are not handcuffed by Colorado's standards. They teach excellent content. The students that you've been seeing and celebrating are proof of that. So I just, I wanna make it clear, we're not languishing in some social studies standards dungeon. Unable to teach the right things because Colorado is a skills-based shop. Um, our teachers are overcoming or compensating or leading beyond, going above and beyond what those standards expect. They're already doing that, which is why they'll be excellent partners in this tasking that you're contemplating. I just wanna set a realistic expectation about how quickly you do something of this magnitude at the scope we're talking about.
And I would agree with that timeline. That's a timeline that I actually thought was more than fair. Okay, so.
I agree with that.
This is, this is a long-term thing. How can we, but it's also part of that seven-year, big audacious hairy goal thing. Whatever it's called. Okay, any further? Now, I did hear from student board representatives that civics is required at Falcon High School. And, you know, I'm not sure about PPEC. I'm not sure about Sand Creek. I'm not sure about this, but, you know. We know we're doing it the right way. What I wanna know is, can we improve upon that? So if we're gonna be, if we're gonna get that Baldridge Award, award, we always have to look at how to improve. Process improvement. Okay, now we're on to monthly district performance, or on to information items. Okay, uh, students, you have any questions about social studies or standards or courses?
Just out of curiosity, what's like Colorado's ranking and rigorous of academics? Do you know?
So generally speaking, I would, it's a generalization. Colorado overperforms its standards. Our standard is grade lower than our students. We have a thing called the Colorado Paradox where our students are highly educated. They, they do actually really well considering the state of funding of education in the state of Colorado. But they don't stay in Colorado. So we have a disconnect between how educated our populace is, how well-educated our students are. And where they ultimately end up. So we're a highly educated state. We're a high-performing state, uh, academically. Um, but we don't retain our students and that has to do more with economic factors and, and the kinds of industries and jobs that are available. Um, but there's a pretty impressive body of scholarship that says. If we don't act to improve the applied ability of our students, we're gonna lose out on the economic race to our, to other states. And that's the whole purpose of the federal system is to give these states opportunities to compete. And we don't want students and even families to say, ah, we, we'd, we'd rather go to Utah. Utah has better schools. Utah prepares students better. We want Colorado to be the place. And among the districts in Colorado, we want D forty-nine to be the best choice to prepare students for success in adult life. So that's why this is, this is critical. Um, we gotta build from the foundation. Once we get that new foundation built, we only ha- we have to start it with the incoming freshmen. So this won't actually apply to graduates until about the class of twenty-eight or twenty-nine. But that's the, that's the time scale of these kinds of changes in school districts. Did I answer your question, Jamie?
Any further questions? But you all did hear him say, preparing students for successful adult life, right? I, I came up with that mostly. Okay, so information items, okay? If you have any questions about information items, email them. I do have questions about, uh, district benefits. We don't vote on those renewals, do we?
That's correct.
Okay, so my thing is, is, and I know that she does it, but. Benefits are, are a big cost to a district. Well, we can provide excellent.